I have a call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, November 28th. You can stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How do we call the rule, please? Langin?
Present.
Pratt?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Ryan?
Present.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening unless there's changes that need to be made.
So.
All right, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if there's anybody that would like to come forward at this time. All right, moving along then. We've got our council meeting minutes of November 14th. I'm looking for approval of those minutes unless there's changes that need to be noted.
Who approved minutes?
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noah? You have an opportunity to give us your accounts payable for the last time.
Can we do a five minute?
Yes, please, because I know you wanted to do that. You've mentioned it several times.
No, I'm not going to do that. I did have a chance to review it and it was very well done. I didn't have any questions. All the invoices matched the checks and didn't have any major questions on path through or anything else, so I'm going to make a motion to approve check 76167 dated 11/9/22 to check 76209 dated 11/17/22 and EST 337 and a total amount of $203,437.25.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable this evening?
Of course.
Terry?
Who takes this on from afternoon?
That will be Dan is the alternate. So for December, for the December meeting, Dan gets to review the accounts payable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good for you.
All right, well, with that, I'm looking for support for Noah's motion for our accounts payable for this evening.
Support.
Thank you so much. Tom? Holly, will you call the rule, please? Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Langin?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, moving along, we've got our water and sewer rate study presentation by Baker Tilly. Come on down.
Click that out. It should be loading up on you. You get to turn the media.
Yep, thank you. Sorry. Oh, and then the caps on the front of it. The study is so good. It's so physical.
And then, uh, second floor.
Right. There we go.
That's right, cheeky trend written there. Where I want to be.
Yeah, shadow comments, and that would be great.
Well, this is coming up. I'll introduce myself. I recognize a few of you, but Andy Campbell with Baker Tilly. We've worked with the city. My mentor, Tom Tracyk, and I have worked with the city for a long, long time.
Yeah.
So we were tasked with doing a rate study update primarily with John and Scott over the last few months, and now is the presentation for the first couple scenarios to show you kind of where everything stands and our thoughts on water and sewer rates with an eye towards future capital as well. So which one's first? Water, good. That was the easier one, so we'll go through water first. That's...
Mm-hmm.
All right, so who's got control here?
That would be the clerk.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that works. So I'm going to go through the first couple pages here relatively quickly and kind of just highlight some numbers that are highlighted on your screen here as well. This is the water fund, so we're going to go through like some of the background data here and kind of talk through how we get to our scenario and what our recommendation is for the future here.
Great.
The yellow boxes there are, you can kind of think of it as your unrestricted funds in total. So this is the water money that's available to kind of use for anything. This is a little bit dated because you can see that this is as of your audit date in 6/30/2021. You actually have a little bit more money now. The 22 audit I hear is getting finished up here, but this is as of your public audit 1920 and 21. You'll see a number in there that's orange, 157, I think, yeah. That is your RRI. So as a part of your agreement with USDA role development, one of your bonds is through USDA. You have to save money in a separate designated account for capital improvements. So that money is available for the stuff that we're going to talk about tonight on the capital side, but you just have, you can't use it for like operations and salaries and stuff that, but that is money that you can use as well, and that number will be talked about as well. Going forward, the next page, really don't have anything to talk about on there. This is just more numbers from your audit, kind of background data about how we present the rate studies, but we're going to go onto pages three and four. It's going to be a little bit difficult to see on the screen here, but you'll see on, if we go into the bottom of page four, I'm just going to actually go all the way to page four since it's easiest to look at that. The very bottom, you'll see a number highlighted in yellow, 716 and change. This is what you need to do, to bring in to run the water fund. So what we do on this page is, this is a compilation of your budget, so you'll see the left column is your 21 actual, your right column, or the middle column right there on the second one is your 22 actual. The third column of numbers is your 23 budget, and then we get to our number, which is at the very bottom of, highlighted in yellow, is without your debt payments, without depreciation, without capital, what do you need to bring in to run the system? So just to run the normal day-to-day operations, we need to bring in $716,370. That is obviously a budget number, but we do carry that forward into our cash flow and our projections going forward to say that number is not going to stay static over time. You need to account for, unfortunately, inflation's a little bit rough right now, but normal inflation we do account for on a yearly basis to kind of, to build into. Five years from now, that number is going to be $800,000 or something, and you need to account for the fact that your budget is going to go up over time due to normal increases in cost. Yep.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, absolutely.
I do not have this report on my screen.
Press your purple button right here, and you'll have two dropdown tabs.
I see. Purple button, water rate and sewer rate.
Yep, there you go.
Got it.
Thank you. And if I can ask counsel too, let's hold questions till he's done with the presentation so that we can get through the presentation.
So next page here is your first debt issue for water. This is the USDA one that I kind of talked about a little bit. This goes through 2051. So this one, we've got a little bit more time on to pay. There is really nothing that's going to change on this for probably ever. It's at a pretty good interest rate for today's world, 3%, and you can prepay at any time, but there's going to be a lot of competing reasons why you most likely won't do that with a lot of other capital improvements coming up. So this will probably just be paid as is until it's paid off. The next one, page six. The water fund is responsible for 51% of this overall debt, this overall debt issued to 2017 bonds. Same thing, it's at a really good interest rate, 2.58. It will be paid off as scheduled for the next 10 years. Two thousand, the next page on page seven is the 2021 refunding bond, so this is the bond that we issued last year, refinancing it's commonly called. But you can see the interest rate was fantastic. Thankfully, we got this done before interest rates went up, and this one is going to be paid off as scheduled through the next eight years. The most important page on the debt is page eight, so you can kind of see what's going to lead into our conversation tonight. The debt payments that you have are pretty much the same for the next eight years. If you can go back a little bit to the highlights for me. So for the next eight years, you got, the debt payments are going to remain in the same at about $340,000, give or take. In 2030, 31, they go down to, so you go down about $90,000 to $255,000, and then another debt issue gets paid off in three years after that. But the culminating thing that we talked about in the working group is that unfortunately on the water side, you'll see this is the same on the sewer side as well, that we don't have relief in the next few years to build in these capital improvements that are coming up. Rate increases are going to be needed. We'll get to that in a second. Unfortunately, there's no budgetary allowance to delay rates or anything with the upcoming capital and the fact that your debt doesn't fall off for about nine years. So that kind of talks about the full debt profile, and then we're going to get into two different scenarios. I'll talk about page eight or page nine, excuse me, in detail here, and then we'll go to a slightly different variation on page 10, but I want to talk through how we build this. Everything we do is on the cash basis. There are no paper numbers, no accounting numbers. What we do to build out our projection is to kind of take into account what you need to fund the system, what your projections are for capital is the big variable, and then what you need to do with user rates to solve for that. The system is actually in pretty good shape right now. We've talked with the city, obviously, in the past about rates. The problems that you're running into now is that inflation has crept up and is eating away at the operating expenses, so we no longer have a buffer for capital, and you are looking at possible capital improvements coming up that we need to start planning for. So if you go down that 22, 23 column, the two numbers at the top there in orange are your current rates. So your current ready-to-servis $33.07 per month. Your current commodity charge is $3.94 per 1,000 gallons. So if everyone's not familiar, no way of new council member coming on, you charge a flat fee based on the meter size, which is your ready-to-serv, and then you charge per 1,000 gallons, and the per 1,000 gallons rate is the same for every single customer. And you get, you charge $3.94 for every 1,000 gallons used. The typical homeowner's bill is an important metric that is used statewide to gauge how affordable your system is for a typical homeowner. That number is in blue there, so if you look at, a typical homeowner uses 4,500 gallons per month, and that's a state and federal metric that's used. Your typical homeowner in this, on just the water side, we'll talk about sewer later, but just the water side is $50.80. So one ready-to-serv charge, 4,500 gallons, $50.80. That puts you, on the water side, you're basically on like the high, medium range for the state. So there's a lot of communities that are higher than you, there's a lot of communities that are lower, you're kind of like right in the middle high range for water. Just as a side note, I mean, that one of the things that, a common misconception on utilities is that actually smaller systems tend to be higher rates after they start having to pay for capital. So what typically happens is that one of the fightbacks you'll get is like, that we talked about, is locations like Lansing Board of Water and Light System, they're able to keep their rates lower because they have just thousands of customers to spread the costs over. So a capital improvement for Lansing Board of Water and Light, I mean, I was just looking at this this morning, coincidentally, I mean, they do bonds for multiple hundreds of millions of dollars, and, but they're able to spread that cost over thousands and thousands of customers, so it doesn't impact their customers as much. If you guys, and you'll see this in a second, if you do a $2 million project, that's an impact to your community, and you're not able to spread that over as many customers, and that directly impacts how you have to charge each individual homeowner. And what you'll see in these systems, and been in the business for about a decade now, what you see is that typically smaller systems are built with grants, so they're able to keep rates low starting out, but once the grant money dries up and once you start to have to fix your system, you start to get the costs up because you just can't spread the costs over that big of a system. So that's where the city's at right now. It's still in an affordable range, you're still charging an acceptable rate by metrics that we see as affordable for community members. You're doing everything you can to keep costs lower. One of the big problems, and we'll talk about this on the sewer side especially, is that grant is intended for poorer communities. So we talked about this with the working group, and we'll talk about the revolving fund in a second here. It is going to be the best option for you, and we'll talk about this more on the sewer side in a second, but the problem that you're going to run into is that the grant, the grants that are coming down from like the big federal stimulus bills and the state are intended for communities that are below the state's median household income, which is $59,000 and change. The city of Williamson is at around $75,000, so you're not eligible for most of the grants out there when it comes to utilities. So that's kind of building into, what we have to plan for is how do we fund our system knowing that we have to go after every grant we possibly can, but we have to plan on paying for our capital improvements with a 100% loan or bond, whatever you want to call it. So getting back to the numbers here, I want to kind of wrap up 2022, 23, and then get to the projection. You'll see a red number there, 331,000 near the middle of the column there. So what we do is we take all your revenues and we take your expenses, and after you're operating, you have $331,000 on a normal year. Your debt payments are around that same amount. So what you can see with normal budgeting, you're actually about break even right now. So the water fund is bringing in pretty much the exact amount of revenues it needs to, to fund your operations and fund your debt, but there is no other funds available for capital. That's the issue that you're going to run into. So what we do in terms of how do we plan for the capital is bringing in the next step of the projection going forward is how can we make this affordable for everybody in terms of the rates, hopefully, this is a scenario that's affordable, and then plan for known capital and semi-known capital improvements at this time based on projections that are primarily from Scott and me trying to project out best we can the capital improvements for the water fund. So you'll see on the very bottom there, on the right-hand side, this kind of works in your expected capital improvement plan. So what we do here on the water side is build in expected cash capital improvements and expected debt. We, on the cash side, what we have talked about internally is to try to have enough funds available to tackle a moderate-sized project with cash. What we don't want to do is just continue to pile on debt issue after debt issue after debt issue. It's costly, you have to pay us to do it every time, I don't need the money, Baker Tilly doesn't need the money. We would much rather put you in a position of, this is the smart way to do it, and we don't want to do 10 debt issues and just blow the debt profile out the window. What we do want to do is make it so that we think is this is affordable and you're saving enough money that you can tackle a medium-sized capital improvement project for your community with cash. And so what we did there in the gray boxes, it's harder to read from back here, but you can see we did an expectation of $200,000 every other year in the water side of the capital improvement. So that's just the water portion. It could, and you'll see this on the sewer side as well, but it could be like, a total project could be larger, like, let's say it's $500,000 and you get $200,000 from water, $200,000 from sewer, and $100,000 from streets. This is just the water portion, but we did anticipate that you would have a project every other year for water that, within a relative scope, could be sustainable for the water fund. The other thing we talked about was that there is a potential for a larger project in the next couple of years on the water side, and part of this is going to come from the, I always get the Congresswoman, I think she's, is her name Slotkin?
Sotkin.
Right? So I know Slotkin, I just don't know the proper pronunciation. Congresswoman Slotkin, she has an allocation dedicated for the city to use the next few years of $3 million. The understanding right now is that that probably won't cover the full cost estimate of the project. So you'll see that in kind of like the gold on the right-hand side is the expected, expectation for the difference. And we've got two scenarios to show you, and this is the only difference between the two scenarios that we're showing tonight on the water side is that project estimate. So this one shows $1.8 million of difference. So the project size would be $4.8 million. $3 million of grant, $1.8 million borrowed. This would be, our recommendation is to still pursue the revolving fund. I'm not talking about that right now, actually. So like, Williamson has done other options in the past. We've helped you with USDA role development. We've helped you with open market bank, we've helped you with open market broker. You've actually done pretty much all the other options out there except for the revolving fund right now on the water side. And what has happened in the market with, a lot of this has to do with the rise in interest rates, so interest rates have risen significantly in the past year. They've kind of plateaued in the past couple of months, hopefully. You don't know where that's going to go in the future, obviously, but the bottom line is that for projects in the next five years, your most likely option to get the best funding agreement is through the revolving fund. So that is through the state of Michigan. It is very, very competitive, and the hard part that we're going to have that you don't know unfortunately until you apply is, are you going to be in the funding range? So one of the big differences between like the revolving fund and USDA role development is that the revolving fund, and it's on a yearly cycle, and they take all the applications from any community that wants to apply. You get scored on a known score, and their new score is 100 points, and you just try to get as close to 100 as you possibly can. They go right down the list and they score everybody, and then they say, okay, this year for water, we have $300 million available. They just draw the line at wherever the $300 million runs out. And if you're above the line, you get the money; if you're below the line, you don't. The hard part that Williamson is going to run into, and we talked about this in the working group, is that being a higher median household income community, you're going to be competing against communities that are lower that have more points on the same project. So what I mean by that is that you're, you're not in a very good position from the start on that aspect that if you and another community do the exact same project and they are below the state's median household income, they're going to get more points and they're going to be above you on the list. The hope for the city of Williamson is that they will, the revolving fund will still have enough money to fund both of you, basically. So we still, in my opinion, like, being your financial advisor, you still want to go after them because the reality is, is that the interest rates for the revolving fund are around 2% right now. Everywhere else, including USDA, is above 4. So it is a massive difference in the amount of interest that you're going to pay over time. So you kind of want to exhaust that possibility. If you can't get it, you can't get it, and you move on to other options from there. But what we did here in this, this plan was to show you if we can get that, knowing that we're most likely going to get 100% loan scenario, so we did not assume any grant, just 100% loan from the revolving fund. This is a realistic scenario for where rates have to go, knowing that we don't want to overshoot it. We don't want to charge too much to the homeowners and say, hey, let's raise rates and jack them up, and then we get grant money or we get a good loan or whatever it may be, and we didn't need to go as high as we did. We don't want to do that and just charge more than we have to. But we do need to start from somewhere and say that we still need to fund capital, we still need to do a capital improvement plan, and this is the way that we can estimate conservatively to an extent, but a little bit aggressive to say, this is what we're going to go after in terms of the capital improvement project, and this is a realistic scenario for the water fund. So getting back to the recommendation at the top, with all that taken into account, is for this scenario, this shows that, I'll just get to the blue box here, your typical homeowner would go up approximately $4.50. So the monthly bill for a typical homeowner for the water side, we've got to get to sewer, for just the water side would go up about $4.50. That will change depending on how you use the system. So it will impact your higher users more on a nominal basis, but that gives you an idea if you chose that rate track, how that would impact a typical homeowner. As always, we always recommend inflationary increases, so that's why you see the 3% thereafter. That's about a $1.75 or so per year increase to the typical homeowner. That's just to keep up with normal cost increase and everything that comes with operating a water fund. So if you go to the next page, and then I'll, I'm going to pause for questions on the water side here, the next page is just saying, it's the exact same scenario, it just takes, instead of borrowing 1.8 million, it's borrowing a million. So we just wanted to show like how that, it doesn't impact the numbers too much, as you can see though. Your typical homeowner's bill goes from 55.25 to 54.13, so about a dollar difference. Ultimately, I mean, I can't imagine that people are going to be looking at the difference of the dollar, they're going to be looking at the difference of the $5 and the sewer side is different. So I would probably be a little bit conservative if I were you and go with scenario one, knowing that you're not going to overshoot it at that point. A dollar difference is not going to make the difference, I don't think, for most people, but we do want to plan for, hopefully, a conservative estimate for capital in the next couple of years. On the very bottom, I do want to point out real quick that those green numbers are your cash that you can use that's not tied to the debt, so that's cash that you can use, that's your unrestricted and your RRI. That's just to show that this, this does not like stockpile cash. This is just to kind of keep the fund in a good position financially, make sure that you're running things in a logical way, but it's not to say that we're going to stockpile millions of dollars and sit on a bunch of money. This is kind of make sure things run and we start tackling the capital improvements in the next five years. So questions on water?
Wonderful questions. All right.
All right. So sewer is a little bit different. I'm sure mostly you have been prepped of, on the fact that the sewer side is a potential for a larger project. So I'm going to go through this one a bit quicker here and get to the final answer here, but just the same kind of approach. So yellow is your, your funds that are available for all purposes, orange is your, your funds that are available for cash, or, excuse me, for capital. Same concept as the water side. I'm going to go all the way actually to page seven, which is your debt profile. Same type of thing on sewer. This one actually doesn't go down very much because that other debt issue is kind of small, but you're, for the next 11 years, your debt is your debt. It's about $160,000 a year, and it's, it ends at $160,000 a year 28 years from now. No, third, yeah, 28, right? Yeah, you do math, 28. So we've got a long time to go on the debt. It is what it is. It's at good rates, but there's no kind of leeway there in terms of how we're going to pay for sewer side of everything. So going to page eight. Page eight, this is with a $6 million capital improvement project. So the difference between the two, getting to the second scenario here in a second, the second scenario shows $12 million. What we talked about internally was kind of prepping for the council for discussions on what to do about a potential sewer project. I know the city has been working with the engineer to kind of plan out these projects, working with Scott on that side as well, and this is to kind of get that all wrapped into knowing that, how that impact of a capital improvement project impacts your rates, and whether you choose a $6 million project or 12 million or something in between or something less, you can kind of ballpark where your rates need to go with this discussion tonight. I'm going to kind of go through the same type of thing here on the 2022, 23 column. Your typical homeowner's bill actually, coincidentally, is pretty similar right now. It's 50 bucks on the sewer side. Sewer is generally speaking, a little bit more expensive in the state, so you're actually kind of like right in the middle range for sewer in the state of Michigan at $50 per month. If you go down further, you'll see the same red and green, red and teal boxes there. The sewer fund prior to capital is pretty much in the same position as water where, give or take, you're cash flow neutral. You've been running the system effectively, you're paying for your operations, you're paying for your debt. There hasn't been many like massive concerns, it's just that you're now in a position where you're cash flow neutral, and we've got to start planning for this big project. On the capital side, you'll see that we kind of, on the other capital, we we did plan for the same $200,000 every other year that we did on the water side to try to pay for some of this with cash and not do everything on debt. One thing we also did put in there for $25,000 a year, you'll see is that you, you have your own plant. But a lot of communities we really want to start targeting, trying to get the inflow and infiltration down. And what that means is basically like you're, when you as a sewer system, people pull water out of the system through their meter and they send it back down the system to treat. And that's what you're expecting on a normal basis is that people are going to pull like the, let's say 5,000 gallons a month out and they're going to put 5,000 gallons a month back into the system to treat in the sewer side. What you aren't expecting to an extent is that when it rains and everything else comes down, the rainwater comes down and has to be treated in the sewer system as well. So, it's not just people using the water and sending it back. When it rains, you get a bunch of more water at the sewer plant that you have to treat as well. But you don't really need to treat, you don't need to treat rainwater if it doesn't get in the system. So, one of the things we did talk about that's kind of in the plan is to try to start tackling some of that inflow and infiltration, knowing that can't go out there and make sure every pipe is sealed perfectly. But if we can get some of that down, maybe we don't have to do as big of a project on the sewer side. So, trying to limit the amount of flow that goes to the plant will help you maintain a healthier system and you don't get as much variance in the amount of flow that during rain events. With the project, that pretty much, I mean, there's those two variables, but ultimately the project is dictating where rates go on the sewer side. You can see that if you did a $6 million project through the revolving fund, it would be $270,000 a year in payments. The, for the sewer side, the water, we can debate. If you want to do that with a bank or with USDA or something, we can talk about the positives and negatives there. It's going to be higher interest rate. But if you're going to do a million dollars, there's some, there is some valid reasons why you might not want to go through a state red tape program to do a million dollar funding. With the sewer side, there, it is revolving fund. Revolving fund is the, the number one. There's only one option and then everything else is way down below. With a $6 million plus project, you really need to try to see if you can get revolving fund monies because of the amount of the interest cost. You're talking about a massive difference in the payments if you were to go to another option and get like 4% plus of interest in the interest rate. So, the revolving fund, even if you can't get grant, is the best option for the sewer side. And we did show that as being 100% funded through a loan from the revolving fund. It's $270,000 a year and you can kind of just think about where this goes conceptually that's driving the rate the most because you look at your current system brings in just over a million dollars a year. If we need to get another $270,000, you can see that that's not going to be easy. You can't just go from a million dollars revenue and then go to we now we need about 1.3 million dollars of revenue and not have to do anything with rates. So, going back up above, what we did was to kind of put together, there's a bunch of different ways to do this. But what we talked about internally was to try to do a two-year program to get the rates where you need to get to, to do that project. So, if we were going to undertake a $6 million project, ultimately you have until you close on the debt to get the rates in place. So, if the, if you were to say we're gung ho, we're going, we're going full steam and we're going to close on the debt issue next year, then you got to have the rates in place next year. If you take your time and it's three years, then you can do whatever you want with rates in the meantime, but the rates have to be in place in three years by the time you close on the debt. So, what we did was to kind of split the difference to say we realistically think that it's possible to do something in 2024. Just as a side note, it's not realistic to do a project in 2023 at this point with everything that's going on and you still got a lot of planning to do. So, 2024 was the target for a realistic start date. And in order to do that, you can see that on the concentrate of the blue boxes again, your typical homeowner's bill in year two would go to 6665. So, over the two years, it's about a $15.60 increase. So, not easy. That is basically to cover the capital. It takes care of everything. It takes care of your capital improvement plan like that we talked about at the bottom there, based on estimates, obviously. But that's where the, the typical homeowner's bill would go. And then if you, if your business that uses more, you would, you would get affected more nominally. But that's where your typical homeowner would be at. Do you want to talk about the 12 million dollar scenario, just so you can see how it changes? So, yep, on the next page there for me, thank you. This shows $12 million. The blue number there in the 2425 column would be 756, is that 73? 7560. So, it's about a $25 increase. So, ultimately, it's we, one reason why we're not saying, I mean, it's, there is no action tonight on rates. This is just informational anyways. But we're not saying that you want to go to $75 right now. I think that you want to take an approach to say we have this information and now we really need to start hammering down with Scott and John and the team to say this is what, what project we want to go after. We know that if we go after a $6 million project, it's going to be $66 for the typical homeowner. If we go after 12 million, it's going to be 75. Are we okay with that? Is it, does it need to be something different? There's a lot of things to unpack there. But this kind of gives you the starting point to say, to start making decisions that what is the project cost? What do we go after in terms of funding? Knowing that again, like I don't want to be too much of a Debbie Downer, but we have to be realistic that and I'm more than happy to have discussions about this further. I know I want to honor time moments here tonight and stuff. But there's a lot of discussions about states and getting money and the federal grant, the federal government getting all this money for all the IAJA and the IRA bill and all this stuff going around. But the reality is, is that that's targeted for communities that are below the state's median household income. It's going to be very, very difficult. It's not saying that we're not going to try. Your engineers will try. The team will try. We will try to give you every avenue possible. But we do have to be realistic that getting a low interest, low interest loan is your best option as a community. And that's what we're showing tonight to give you a realistic explanation of if you do that, this is the decision that would have to be made. So, comments, questions?
Any questions from the council? It's a lot to process. And we've been through this before with rate studies. John?
Yeah, just if I could, I guess, map out a path forward. So, we need to have a work session specific to sewer infrastructure. I mean, we had the water one and that kind of, that, that it's not easier, but it's easier because we have a $3 million allocation to start those projects. And the model included the 1.8 million because that was sort of the leftover amount that, that wasn't funded. So, that was, you know, it was a good number to work with. But sewer, we need to really dive in with council and with Scott to validate the projects. We did want to show the, you know, they're not worst case scenarios, they're scenarios. So, that, that happens first. And just to remind you for folks, you know, rates are set in April. So, April 2023 is when we would set rates. So, it's not a lot of time, but there'll be a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings before, you know, there's any rate increase, let alone anything that's, that's here tonight. I think it's important to continue to share that message is that you first, this isn't on the agenda for a decision. But in Baker Tilly, they do a great job. I mean, although Dex, I worked in the village of Dexter in the late 90s, early 2000s. Mr. Tracy was there. So, they are the, the right folks to present the information. Ultimately, it's incumbent upon us to validate the projects and, and make sure that, you know, through you, the elected officials of the, the community is, is at least accepting of the projects that we move forward based on the rate structure. I can tell you my last community, we were faced with, we had four straight years of 18% rate increases for wastewater, which was not fun, which is a lot worse. But again, you know, regardless of any, any dollar spend, any dollar rate increase or percent rate increases is always going to be and should be with some healthy skepticism from the businesses and residents.
Absolutely. And I mean, we've been very, very fortunate as a community that we've not had to do rate increases for several years. And I think, you know, we can all collectively say that we knew this was coming. And so, you know, with our new council members coming in, we'll be able to start having some healthy conversations about what, you know, what path we're going to take. And I appreciate your presentation this evening. You know, it's, it's good information to have. We have to have it in order to do the work that we need to do to make sure that our community has the services that they deserve. And sometimes it's the tough decisions that, you know, we have to make. But at least we have the information that we can support making those decisions. So, I appreciate you being here. Terry, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, you said something about how you have to have the rate increases locked in place before you can apply the revolving fund, is that correct?
Not application, before you close. Before you close on the debt. So, before you sign all the paperwork and close and like basically start construction. Before you start construction, you have to have the rates in place.
The rate, the rate, these projected rate increases have to be in place before that?
Not before you apply though. You can apply and try to get anything you want, but when you start construction, the rates have to be in place. So.
Starting construction. You mentioned that we, would you say we were in the upper, the middle of the upper band or something like that for the average household price for water?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, if the least expensive place in Michigan is zero, most expensive is 100, what number are we?
Well, and percentage wise?
Yeah.
Percentage wise, so zero.
Ranky.
Oh, I mean.
You said we're in the middle of the upper band, I think that's 85%?
Well, I think.
No, you're, you're about the 60th percentile.
Yeah.
Yeah. And on the sewer side, you're about 55 percentile. So, you're just above the median on sewer. And you're a little bit more than just above the median on water. I mean, just, we work with 400 communities. So, we work with a ton of communities on this stuff. I mean, we have communities that are in about $200 a month for one system. There are systems out there that are very, very expensive, but the, the medians are around like 50 bucks, give or take. 40 to 50 bucks is a median for water. Around 50 bucks is a median for sewer. So.
And what was the last time we had a rate increase?
Oh, gosh. I've.
19.
19.
2019.
But it was, it was very small. It was very, what was it, a total of 3%? So, it was one and a half and one and a half. So, but what this is showing is 3%, 3% on each side. So, we've been able to keep our rate increases low by doing that. But this is something that definitely has to happen. Danny, you have a question?
I was going back to when we had to lock in the rates. Now, that's a, that's a state deal. Is that basically because we have to show them how we are going to repay the debt?
Correct.
Why it has to be locked in the debt fund?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before we move on in our agenda this evening? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I know, we'll see you again soon.
Yep.
Forward to it. Tom, can you hit the lights for us? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All very good information. And John, you'll get those work sessions for the first of the year. Thank you so much. All right, well, we are going on, we're moving on in our agenda and this is something that I knew was coming. And I'm happy, I'm sad, I have a lot of emotions over this because he's been a mentor to me. And I'm going to miss having you at this table. Okay, I might be gone. You can deal with the rate study. But with the rate increases. I don't think Matt's probably going to allow that. But we're here to honor Noah Ballinger this evening with a certificate of appreciation in his recognition, recognition of service to the Williamson City Council and your outstanding dedication to the community by also serving on Planning Commission, NISA Board, Cemetery Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Downtown Development Authority. And that probably thinks there's more to add to that. We present you with this certificate of appreciation. You have improved our community with your leadership, hard work and dedication. The City Council of the City of Williamson and this 24th day of November, 2022 extends to Noah Ballinger, our personal gratitude and also those of the residents. Matt, did you figure out how many years it's been? You did the math, right?
Math guy left.
The math.
What did that sign say? That was.
It's about 17 years.
About 17 years.
But I did.
Was it consecutive?
But again, I did fill out my application for you because you requested it.
I'm not letting him go that easy.
For the planning commission.
Yes.
Hopefully I'll be on the agenda and hopefully I'll be accepted for that.
Yes, and I do appreciate it.
And I'll still be in the audience.
Yes. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that much.
Put an asterisk.
Yes. I have appreciated all of your wisdom. Moving on, our action items, we haven't done this evening. So, we'll keep right on moving. Our discussion items, we have our road diet. And I bet that there's an update from our city manager, John.
I guess I'll defer to Scott. I mean, we did hire Spicer to get going on the road diet. So, I don't know if you have anything to add at this point.
They're just putting things together. So, just keep it in your thoughts and so forth, we'll be back.
Yep. I can tell you I've got some survey markers in front of my house. So, I'm excited about it. I took a picture and sent it to John. Yeah. Well, good. We look forward to having, you know, updates after we probably January? I'm thinking January. All right. Well, we'll see you then. All right, moving along, correspondence received. We did receive notice from DTE Electric of a public hearing and integrated resource plan. If you have any questions regarding that, you can check with John and he can get those answers for us. I'll move right into our department head reports. And John, you've got your city manager report.
Thank you. I do want to thank Noah too. I know I haven't been here that long. It's pretty, pretty amazing to serve a community for as long as you did on a volunteer basis. It's entirely different to get paid for it. So, the fact that you, you volunteered for that long is pretty amazing. And I don't want to say we're going to miss you because we're going to keep seeing you around. But I want to thank you just again, my limited time here. You're a great asset to the community and thanks for all your service.
And the other points, so the North Phantom Street project, Scott has been meeting the individual homeowners and some word got out that, oh, they missed the vote or they weren't part of the meeting. So, just wanted to double down with folks that we are going to have a public meeting with everyone that's interested to come and talk about that project. So, stay tuned for that. We did have our DDA walkthrough on November 1st, or November 21st, rather. And that'll be an annual thing for DDA. Just take a little quick tour through the downtown. And then we generated, I think, a list of like eight to, eight to 10 things that we're going to be focusing on. And some of them are very short term, like painting benches and garden gardens and things like that. And the other ones are longer term, like park lottery construction. And once we share that list with DDA, and again, it's just sharing a list that our next meeting, we'll include that with, I'll include that with one of my management reports for council so you can have an idea of what we're talking about. And the light parades this Saturday. Looking forward to my first light parade here as a city manager. I think it'll be exciting. A lot of other great events going on, pancakes, breakfast with Santa, ladies night out on, on the 8th, I think, the Thursday, the 8th. So, a lot of cool things happening. So, that's all I have.
All right, thanks. We'll move right across the room to Chief. How are you?
Good evening, I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Good, hey, just a couple of quick things, update from the, from the department. I don't want to say a busy month, but not quiet either. The car crashes are insane. We had eight with two of them being car deer. So, the deer are moving, you know, be careful. They're, they're crazy out there. Couple drunk drivers, we had four with one being in front of Sunnyside that was super drunk and rolled their car. Mutual aid was up this month. We had five calls out to the township for the PD to help them and a few with NISA. One of the, one of the bigger things that I want to hit on is this last weekend, we had a rash of largely from autos. We got hit pretty hard right up the Grand River corridor. My guess is it's a curb that probably came out of each or out of town that rolled through and it was hitting us. I didn't see any of the other municipalities to see what their numbers were. I did see in the other municipalities, to see what their numbers were, but the huge important takeaway from this is, one car was unlocked and had a gun in it, was stolen. So we've got a gun that's out there now. You've gotta keep your vehicles locked. I know people say, well, it's just Williamson, it never happens here, but you're right, we got great people here, good citizens, but unfortunately, we got bad people that go through town all the time, and they're looking to take advantage of us, good-hearted people, and trusting people, so please keep your, keep your cars locked, keep your weapons inside of your residence in a safe, secure spot. Yeah, enough said on that, and the tops of night off, our newest soon-to-be officer, this is in his last full week. Chad has a half week next week, and he graduates next Friday, so the 9th, and hopefully get him on board and get him started.
Great, excellent. Well, you've got somebody here with you.
Officer Rutherford.
Yeah, right?
Is he still here?
You're not, you're not Chan, are you?
No. No, I'm, I'm, yeah.
No, Officer Rutherford, just decided to sit in and just kind of see how, you know, things are going, and just get a table.
Yeah. I'm thrilled.
All that's going on, the excitement, that we ought to get to share in.
Right.
So, but, yeah.
Happy to be here.
Good, great, happy to have you. Well, thanks, Chief, appreciate that. All right, moving on, for our department head reports, we have our treasurer here this evening, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good, excellent.
Just a quick, a couple of quick things, I guess, are primary things that Michael and I, our department, we are wrapping up the audit, getting a little nervous, because we're two weeks away from presenting, and they're still sending us some questions, and everything, we've got a list today of things that they wanted, but we hope to get there, I think we will, and they know, they gotta present, so they gotta put something together quick here.
Right.
So we should see the results of that at the next meeting. Property tax bills are at the printer, everybody will be happy, I'm sure, to see those come out. It's like Christmas time.
Right.
And the other major thing is, for revenue sharing, we changed the name on EBIT, CDT, IRS, whatever you wanna call it, but there is a requirement that we have to complete by December 1st, that is pretty much wrapped up, ready to submit, we're just going through some of the final, critiquing it, looking, you know, making sure we all agree. Eyes dotted, teeth crossed, that'll probably be submitted tomorrow, I've done it, maybe the 30th, and he's gonna get the signature and stuff, and we'll send it off, and should be good to go on that.
Excellent, great, and thank you so much. All right, moving along, we've got subcommittee committee reports, so I'll start down here with Tom. Anything to share this evening?
I haven't had anything.
All right, Terry?
Nothing to report.
All right, Noah? Dan? Brandon?
Department head has super important informational meeting.
Yeah.
It went swimmingly well, so that's all involved.
All right, excellent, great, appreciate that. DDA also had an informational meeting, and their regular meeting, we had a lot of good discussion about getting ready to move into this next year, we've got some really neat ideas, that we're gonna put a workshop together, kind of strategize about downtown, and how to get more people into our downtown, see all of our, you know, shops, and independently owned restaurants, and retail, and service businesses, so I'm looking forward to that in the new year. And that was about it for, for DDA. So moving right along, we've got audience participation again, anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? All right, we'll keep moving right along then. Council member comments, I think I'll start down here at this end, Brandon?
Nothing, besides, thank you Noah for your service, and I'm hoping to see you soon on planning. I'll be there.
Dan?
Just like to echo everyone else, and just thank you Noah for all your years of service to the community, not just on council, but with Boy Scouts, and Kiwanis, and everything else you've done during your time here, and I know you're gonna continue on with a lot of those other projects, but just thank you for everything you have done, and continue doing it.
Let's keep you, Tom.
Again, Noah, thank you, I know, I came by the council two years ago very, very green, as to how this whole thing processed, and you were always very willing, whether it was through after-meeting chats, or phone calls, emails, to fill me in on some information that helped me get better at this job, and I really appreciate that, thank you.
Terry?
Not just Noah, but Mrs. Bellinger, thank you. Well done.
Raise him right.
Is it like a 50/50 thing, we give 50%, you give 50%, or is it 80/20? Or is it 100?
Yeah. He's a good guy.
Noah?
I, I've just, it's been an honor to be here and have fun, and help the community. And again, I still will be with the Kiwanis, I'll still be doing the pancake breakfast, I'll still do the Scouts.
Yep.
And hopefully I'm planning.
Yes.
And I'll still be, I think, on the personnel committee, helping with NISA here, so.
Excellent, great. Well, I raised up my tears, so I just want to thank you so much, and not only, you know, being here at this table, but the friendships that you had with all of us, and we know that those will continue too. And so, I just, you know, I can't say enough about, you know, everything that you've taught me, and shared, and also, you know, mentored all of us at this table, we really appreciate your knowledge on, on everything, and everything that you've done for this community, and it does not go unnoticed, and so I hope you enjoy only, you know, coming to this chamber once a month, instead of, you know, several times a month, and I hope, Beth, you enjoy having him back on these evenings, too. But if all of a sudden he starts showing up more often, we'll know it didn't work out.
Right. He's everything right at home.
Well, as, as John mentioned, we do have a lot of activities that are happening over the next several weeks. This, this past weekend was shop small, and what I want to say about that is, you can shop small every single day in Williamson, we have so many great businesses here in our downtown district, it's not just that one time a year where we want to promote those businesses, so I would encourage everyone, you know, you know, check out the businesses in our community, there are so many. This coming Saturday is our light parade, I have it on good authority that Santa will be there to help light our Christmas tree, as he always does. We've got some other special participants in the parade, so I'm not gonna give away any of that, you'll have to come to the parade to see it. On Saturday during the day, we're gonna have Phila Copcar, which benefits our local food pantry, the Memorial Howard Dahlstrom Food Pantry, so you can buy groceries in DNW, take them out, and our, our police department will take those over to our food department, food pantry, or you can give monetary gifts as a donation, because then we use that as leverage to buy those commodities in a cheaper form. But that's always something really great that, you know, happens here in our community, and it gives back to our community, helps those in need. There's the pancake breakfast with Santa at the schools, like, like John said, I'm sorry that we don't have a men's night out, but ladies' night out is the date, and there's several businesses in our downtown area that are participating. We've had some warm weather of late, I'm not gonna say the word, but just remember that there is no parking on our city streets from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., so that if DPW needs to get out and clear the roads, for whatever reason, they have the ability to do that. And with that, I think that's it, we have one more meeting this year, I want to acknowledge